I'd like to call to order the regular meeting on the 20th of August. Please join me in the pledge allegiance and stay standing for the invocation.
My pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we are truly all brothers and sisters of mankind, and God, you have allowed us to be joined together with our communities. We praise your presence and for the gift of the people, the people who continually join hands and hearts in intentional support through their physical and financial contributions, and it's for the betterment of our city. We thank you for allowing this council to once again come together, to continue their leadership as responsible and trustworthy stewards. And Lord, we ask that you reveal to us new wisdom and ideas which will unite us as one, causing all to prosper as our community, which demonstrates respect and value for all our lives. And Lord, we ask for your protection for our police and fire and for the men and women of our armed forces serving throughout the world. In your name, amen. All right, Councilman Campbell is not here this evening, so I need a motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Stip and a second from Councilman Pizzillo. Roll call vote, please.
Actually, you could just do all in favor, Mayor. I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
You can just do the all in favor.
Oh, oh, great, okay. It said roll call on here, so I'll just change it to that. So let's vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? The ayes have it. We have no communication tonight, so now is the time for citizens who would like to address the City Council on any non-agenda item within the jurisdiction of the Goodyear City Council. Other cards?
Yes, Mayor.
Wonderful. Do you want to...
Jeff Rabel.
Welcome. Please state your name and your dress.
Yes, my name is Jeff Rabel. I live at 105 North Florence Avenue in Litchfield Park, formerly a citizen of the city of Goodyear. I grew up not far from City Hall. I happen to be a council member for the city of Litchfield Park. I am here, however, as one of the co-chairs for the community advisory group for the Super Fund Site, the Phoenix Goodyear Airport Super Fund Site. I'm here to give a very brief update and ask, and I have an ask for you. The brief update is, well, I actually am fairly aware or am sure that you're aware of the status of the Super Fund Site here at the city of Goodyear. Progress is certainly being made. The plume is contained and the contamination on the two primary properties, Phoenix Goodyear Airport itself and the former unit dynamics, the contaminants are contained to the premises. Of course, the plume has expanded well beyond the unit dynamic site historically, but that plume is contained. So progress is being made, and certainly there are activities underway such as further protecting the City of Goodyear Production Line Number Three to ensure that it doesn't receive any further contamination, that it remains productive, free of contamination. Also, studies going on to better understand the source area, understand how we can more effectively, more aggressively remediate the contamination there. Also, there are preliminary plans to do a better job, more aggressive job of cleaning up the general plume, AKA the crane plume, that has expanded northward. Also, on the Phoenix Goodyear Airport grounds themselves, certainly more activity, more wells being inserted, both injection as well as extraction wells to continue to shrink that plume. So a lot of progress being made. However, it's important that citizens remain aware that the city councils of our three cities remain engaged. Certainly, the city of Goodyear has been a strong partner in that endeavor. In fact, members of the city community advisory group, which we'll refer to as CAG, actually meet here twice a year, in the same room, to get updates from the responsible parties. The CAG operates as a voice of the community at large and has historically had members of city council among its membership. I am currently the only city council member who is on the, within the CAG. Some of you may know that I've opted not to remain on city council. That's a personal issue. I'm actually leaving the Valley of the Sun for the first time since I was eight years old, so I won't be able to continue to serve. My ask is that you consider joining the CAG yourselves as individuals and represent more closely the city of Goodyear, or perhaps encourage members of your community to join the CAG so that we have better representation. Currently, there are three citizens in Goodyear who are on the CAG. I would welcome and strongly encourage more. Thank you very much this evening.
Thank you very much. We certainly will take staff, take a look at that, and somebody will probably communicate with you.
Thank you. Incidentally, I have a brochure to provide.
If you would like to hand that to the lawyer there? Thank you. Thank you so much. He did very well on the time because I didn't explain to you your time limit, so he did very well, didn't he? Yes. Okay, let's go to the consent agenda. Will the city clerks please read consent agendas, six point one through six point eight by title only, please?
Six point one, approval of minutes. Six point two, approve the final plat for Paseo Place Parcel Two. Six point three, approve changes to the 2018 council meeting calendar. Six point four, approve a new Series Twelve liquor license for Indub Pizza Pub. Six point five, approve the final plat for Pebble Creek Marketplace. Six point six, rescind the Quantum Corporate Center final plat approval. Six point seven, approve an application for a temporary extension of premise for beach, house, food, and spirits. Six point eight, approve the final plat for Australia Parcel 11.82.
Thank you. Does council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? All right, can I please have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Hampton and a second by Councilman Lortano. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great, let's go to the business. And again, council, remind you to refrain from asking questions until staff presentation are complete. There's a motion on the table. Seven point, aye, seven point one on business is a public hearing to consider the Abel Ranch rezone. Open the public hearing. Alec Lotinsky, Planner Two, to present. Alec, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. Welcome back.
Thank you.
The subject property tonight for this item is located at the, or is south and west of the southwest corner of Citrus Road and Camelback Road. To the west, we have the Sadea Community. To the south is an area zone commercial and then Indian School Road. And then to the east is the 10303 Business Park and additional I-1 and C-2 property. To the north is Camelback Road, and the north of that is county land. In 2006, the property was zoned planned area development under the Televeria Estates. So if I can use the pointer, it's going to be this area in yellow, like I said, the Televeria Estates PAD. And it includes the portion that's carved out of the subject property tonight, so that's that internal piece right here. The PAD allowed residential development with lot sizes of 110 feet by 140 feet, and so the right is the conceptual plan that was included in the PAD. This request is to rezone the area in red, so on the left side of this green, to the, oh, and a portion of general commercial on that corner, to the city's R16 and AU districts. When the applicant first met with the city to discuss the project, they proposed doing a new PAD to implement their plans included in the narrative. Since the proposed minimum standards met, the city's updated residential district standards, staff recommended utilizing the city's straight rezon process to the R16 and AU. The applicant complied with staff's recommendations and requests the following rezone. Approximately 164 acres, which is the area shaded in red, is proposed to be rezoned to R16. Per their proposed development plan, this would include 438 lots and approximately 53 acres, which is the area in green, to be rezoned to the agricultural urban district and include 13 lots. Majority of the subject property is within the Luke Air Force Base noise contour lines, so per Luke Air Force Base's recommendation and the city's general plan standards, there is a density restriction of two dwelling units per acre within that boundary. Therefore, some additional stipulations were put into place to meet these requirements. On the right is the city's development standards that will apply to the property. And in addition to that, the stipulation has been recommended to stipulate the maximum number of lots in the entire Abel Ranch community to 451 lots. Since the zoning ordinance does not include density requirements, we ensure that the Luke and general plan standards are being met by capping the number of lots and setting the density of Abel Ranch at 2.07. Luke Air Force Base did review the application and stated the application will not negatively impact operations and meet their guidelines. Letter was included in your packets. The other requirement which the applicant agreed to was a stipulation requiring a minimum of 15% of the lots in the R16 area to be at least 75 feet wide, providing for a minimum amount of lot diversity in the neighborhood. This slide shows the northern portion of the conceptual development plan. So just as a reminder, the conceptual plan is conceptual and does not constitute any site plan or plat approval. So along Camelback, there is an entry into the neighborhood. The traffic study does anticipate a traffic signal in the future at this entry point. Another entry is at the north half of Citrus, onto what's labeled Meadowbrook Avenue here. And as you can see, the variation in colors on the plan identify ranges of lot sizes that the applicant proposes, which include 55-foot wide 60s, 65s, and 70s, and lot depths between 130 and 140. Now, the rezone does set the minimum to 55-foot wide, 100 feet long, so if the developer were to sell the property, the next developer could come in and develop these all as 55. However, the stipulation of 15% and of the lots being 75 would still apply, and the stipulation of restricting the number of units will ensure that density is always being met. This is the southern half of the conceptual plan, and we can see that there's another driveway at the south portion off Citrus. This internal portion, like I said, is cut out of the proposed rezoning. It's owned by a different property owner. Abel Ranch has included two possible future connection points into the development, and one is right here where I'm pointing, and the other is on this north side. Also, I should note that the other property owner has submitted an application for rezoning and does include these entries in their plans as well. On March 28th, staff held a neighborhood meeting to discuss the project with the public. Two people attended this meeting. One was the property owner included in that out parcel. The other was a resident of the Sadea Community. Neither expressed objection to the request. On August 8th, a public hearing was held before the Planning and Zoning Commission. Two residents from the Russell Ranch Community, which is to the northwest of the subject property, spoke in opposition of the request with concerns regarding density. To conclude, the applicant has demonstrated compliance with all required codes and ordinances. Staff recommends approval subject to the stipulations in the ordinance. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the item with a six-to-one vote on August 8th. This concludes my presentation. Ed Bull, on behalf of the applicant, is here with a presentation as well for you, and I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Alex. So did you say the applicant's not here?
The applicant is here.
You said, would he like to speak before we begin?
I believe so.
All right. I believe we're seeing Ed Bull come forward. Good evening, Ed.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the council, Ed Bull, 702 East Osborne. I represent Abel Ranch. I don't know if you have other cards or if you want or need a presentation from me. If you do, I'll be happy to go through our PowerPoint, or we're pleased with the recommendations. If you're pleased with them, I'm happy to sit down.
Well, thank you. I think we are, I think they're nodding their head. We do not need an application. I think they're a presentation, sorry. I think they're all very well informed.
I'll take a seat.
All right.
Thank you.
Well, stay around just in case. You never know. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, then I'm going to close the public hearing. Will the city clerk please read Resolution Number 2018-1883 by title only, please?
Adopt Resolution Number 2018-1883 declaring as a public record those certain documents filed with the city clerk titled supplementary zoning map number 18-02, zoning exhibit zone R1-6 legal description, and zoning exhibit zone AU legal description.
Thank you, Laurie. We're going to have a motion. We're going to vote in this two parts, so everybody understands that. So could I have a motion and a second to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Stip and a second from Councilwoman Lortano. Open for council discussion. Councilman Pizzillo?
Just a comment for those that are possibly watching this. Been thoroughly briefed on this particular. That's why you're not seeing, at least for me, any questions. So that's all I have to say.
Councilman Stip?
You know, I think just to talk about the project concept itself is, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things that can go on the corner of Citrus and Camelback. A lot of industrial, a lot of other products that, as we try to develop that from a residential perspective, that may not necessarily be a good fit. This project is a very good fit for that neighborhood or that, for that area, and it's, it'll be a welcome additional residential that we're looking for, but in addition, given their proximity to Sadea, it'll be a very nice complement to the area. So thank you for bringing that forward.
Thank you for the comments. And Councilman Lortano?
I kind of want to echo what Councilmember Stip said. Thank you very much for bringing this forward. I think it will enhance that area. I know right now what we've been learning about how real estate has changed in the last decade is the smaller lots are really what's selling and really what people want, so I think this will probably have great market demand. It looks great, so thank you.
Any other comments?
Sure.
Councilman Hampton?
I'm going to echo the same thing. Yeah, I think it's a good, a good mix as well. There's some larger and there's some smaller, and I think it's a good mix for that, that area as well, so, yeah, I think it'll be good for the, good for the city as well, so thank you.
Well, culturally, I welcome the Abel name on it. Abel Ranch is familiar, the name Abel, and we certainly are excited about having this. So roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
So will the city clerk please read ordinance number 2018-1395 by title only, please?
Adopt Ordinance Number 2018-1395, conditionally rezoning approximately 218 acres located at the southeast corner of Citrus Road and Camelback Road, now known as Abel Ranch, by rezoning approximately 164 acres to R1-6, single-family detached residential zoning, and by rezoning approximately 54 acres to AU agricultural urban zoning, amending the zoning map of the city of Goodyear, providing for non-abridgement, providing for corrections, providing for severability, providing for an effective date, and providing for penalties.
Thank you. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman, just forgot the name.
Keno.
Keno, thank you. And a second from Councilman Pizzillo. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
No way. Aye.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, the next item on business is another public hearing to consider the modification of stipulations of the approval, of approval contained in the ordinance approving the Quantum Corporate Center rezoning. Open public hearing. Karen Craver? Oh, and I forgot, it's Katie Wilken. We changed tonight, didn't we? Planning manager, two present.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council Karen was out unexpectedly, so I'm filling in. As was stated by the mayor, this is a rezoning request for the Quantum Corporate Center. The intent of this rezoning request is not to change any of the land uses, but to modify the original stipulations of approval. It's located at the southeast corner of Van Buren Street and Bullard Avenue. It does include the property owned by the city, which we're in right now, the Goodyear Municipal Complex. That entire property was privately owned at the time of the original rezoning, so when the stipulations are being modified, we thought it was in the best interest for the city to participate, to have the stipulations for our property modified as well, along with the original property. The original rezoning was approved in 2004, and this is the original supplementary zoning map, and I hope you can see, the corner is zoned C-2, and the balance of the property is zoned I-1, light industrial. Since 2004, it's been 14 years. There were many stipulations originally included that included detailed infrastructure solutions, items such as there has to be an approved final plat, and just some references to a development agreement that's getting outdated as well. And so, since it's been so long, it was just time to go back to those stipulations and update them to current codes and ordinances. The item that was just considered during the consent agenda was to rescind this final plat that's also been hanging out there since 2004 with approval. The staff report references a property number one, which is the privately held portion, and property number two, which is the portion that is owned by the city of Goodyear. There were originally 34 stipulations of approval, and those have been reduced down to 16. All the stipulations of approval do meet our current regulations and policies. We did take out some items that repeated information that was in the zoning ordinance, so it's not that those regulations no longer apply. They're just not needed as stipulations because they're required normally anyway. We did recently approve a minor land division, which split the privately held property into three lots. That hasn't been recorded, but just to show you some of the plans for the future development, and it is planned for industrial uses. Finally, the other thing that we did with this zoning is, when the original zoning happened in 2004, there wasn't a legal description with the commercial C-2 property, so all we had to go on was that original supplementary zoning map. So the property owner did submit a legal description for that property, so now we have an exact description. But again, the intent wasn't to enlarge or make that portion that was C-2 smaller, it was just to get that legal description so we know exactly where it is. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
We appreciate that. Is the applicant present? Would you like to speak?
I'm not sure.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Logan Hop with Hillgarth Wilson at 2141 East Highland Avenue. I'm here as the, two of the property owner representatives, and we just want to agree with the proposed stipulation modifications that the city staff has put together for you guys tonight. Really, that's all I have.
Well, thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you.
We're excited about this. Aren't we all? Looking forward to this. Are there any speaker cards? Thank you very much.
No, Mayor.
If you, I tell you what, if they have a question, they're going to call you up, all right?
All right, I'll be right here.
All right, thank you very much. Any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
All right, would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, then I'm going to close the public hearing. Will the city clerk please read Resolution Number 2018-1888 by title only?
Adopt Resolution Number 2018-1888 declaring as public records those certain documents filed with the city clerk entitled official supplementary zoning map number 18-06, legal description of C-2 property one, legal description of I-1 property one, and legal description of I-1 property two.
Thank you. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the resolution?
So moved.
I heard a motion by Councilman Lortano and a second by Councilman Stip. Open for council discussion. All right, then let's go to roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Motion carries.
So we're going to the second part of this. Will the city clerk please read ordinance number 2018-1402 by title only, please?
Adopt Ordinance Number 2018-1402, rezoning property generally located at the southwest corner of Bullard Avenue and Van Buren Street to C-2 general commercial and I-1 light industrial to clarify the boundaries of each zoning district, modifying the stipulations of approval contained in ordinance number 04-884, which approved the Quantum Corporate Center rezoning from C-2 general commercial and I-2 general industrial to C-2 general commercial and I-1 light industrial, amending the zoning map of the city of Goodyear, providing for non-abridgement, providing for corrections, providing for severability, providing for an effective date, and providing for penalties.
Thank you. That was a long one. So could I have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance?
So moved. Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Stip and a second from Councilman Hampton. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, let's go to seven point three. It's business is a public hearing to consider a use permit request for the convenience use drive-through restaurant on the property's own planned area development general commercial. Open the public hearing. Steve Kerchi, Planner Three, to present. Steve?
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers. Use permit tonight. The proposal is within the Canyon Trails Town Center. That's this center right here. We have Cotton Lane, Future Loop 303. Here we have Yuma Road. This is the Super Target. We got the Pottery Barn. We got the Pet Smart, and then the Planet Fitness there rounding out the end. Center's about 91 acres, zoned in 2005. Center is predominant, all commercial use, all C-2 uses for this center. And this is just an aerial photo of the site. Right here is where the proposed convenience use is going. Surrounding it, we have some other convenience uses. We have the Carl's Jr., the Taco Bell, the Jack in the Box. Again, for reference, we have Super Target. To the north of the site, we've got a couple banks, Bank of America and Chase right here. And then zooming in a little further, this is the pad. You can see all the development, all the infrastructure for the center is in, the landscaping, the parking. And right here, this is the development pad where the convenience use is going to go. And the parcel's about one acre in size. The restaurant itself is about 2,200 acres. And here we have the existing drives. Customers will come into the site, use the existing drives, they'll come down here, wrap around the building. Menu board will be here on the southwest corner, and they'll wrap around. Window will be here on the east side. They'll come up, exit, back into the existing drives within the center. Thirty-four parking spaces are required. We have 41 provided. Throughout the center, though, we have shared parking and shared access so that applicants' business can utilize those existing center parking. Proposed business is open, proposed for 24/7 operation. Staff did not include any stipulations to that hours of operation, given that we are in a center that was intended for such uses, and we did not have any residential development within the vicinity of this proposed use. And this is the proposed building design. It does include some elements desired by the applicant for branding purposes, and that's this element here, that's a metal-type element. However, they did incorporate the colors and stone from the rest of the Canyon Trails Town Center. Because this is a public hearing, staff did provide notice as required for public hearings. To date, staff has not received any opposition to this request. We find it is compatible with the surrounding area. Again, there's no residential development within the vicinity of this use. The nearest residential is approximately 1,000 feet across Cotton Lane to the west. As such, staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission, we recommend approval of this convenience use.
Great, thank you, Steve. Would your applicant like to speak? Is Mr. Buddha?
Welcome.
Good evening, council. I just want to say thank, oh, sorry. Just want to say thank you for your time. Again, as Steve has mentioned, we included most of the design standards from Canyon Trails Town Center with the stone, the cornice details, some of the steel awnings, same color palette as described from the design standards from the center. Landscape will be matching existing. The only element that's new, or I want to say enhanced, is the steel fascia, just to make it more dominant as an entry, so customers can see where the entry is, and also emphasize the drive-through. Filiberto's is the proposed restaurant here. They have ninety restaurants around the valley. They're opening a lot more on the west side, and they're also cleaning up some of their and they're also cleaning up some of their designs. So, that's where I kind of come in and help them out with that as they rebrand and kind of go this new direction to also blend in with different centers as well, but also, you know, stay in tune with the times and make it more creative for the customers to come by, and also upgrade their food. As I know, when I was in college at ASU, I used to go there a lot, late at night after studio, but, you know, their food has actually kicked it up a notch. So, I just want to say thank you, and thank you to the city staff for being very proactive and, you know, going back and forth on emails. And also, if there's any questions, I'm more than happy to answer.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you for sharing that with us. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, then I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I have a motion a second to approve the use permit request for the convenience use drive-through restaurant on property zone planned area development general commercial? Do I hear motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Stip, and I didn't hear it.
No, it was me.
Councilman Keno?
Yeah.
It was Pazillo.
Oh, it was, well, I'm sorry. I already gave it to her, so should we go with that?
No, me and Keno.
I thought she said first.
Second.
All right, I'll change it. Councilman Pazillo, second. So, let's open for council discussion. Come on, give us some discussion after all that. Councilman Stip?
Well, as usual, thank you for choosing Goodyear and looking to modernize one of your restaurants here. Very much appreciated. I know it'll do very well in that particular area, but there's plenty of others, so if you want to build another one, work with the staff. But thank you for being here.
Any other comments? Yes, Councilman Hampton?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you and welcome as well. I live right there, so I'm sure I'll be, I'll be there. So, yeah, thank you. Looking forward to that. And it enhances that shopping center. That shopping center is growing, and there's a lot more things going on in that area, too. So, thank you.
Councilwoman Pazillo?
Welcome to the city. And if you know of anybody else that's looking for restaurants up around this side here, please send them this way. Thank you.
Any other comments? Well, welcome. Welcome to a really special city of Goodyear. We have a little bit different culture, and I think you're going to enjoy. We have a very engaged public, and so we look forward to having, to dine in your restaurant. All right, thanks so much. All right, let's go on to the other. 7.4.
Need a vote, Mayor.
I'm sorry, we need a vote, don't we? Thank you very much. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Councilmember Pazillo?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Let's go to 7.4. In business to consider approving Pebble Creek Phase 2, Unit 49 preliminary plat. Steve, you're back on the microphone.
I am, yes. So, we are now in Pebble Creek, Clemery Plat, zoned in 1998. This is the master plan for the entirety of the development. Pebble Creek Parkway, we come in on Clubhouse, pass the residence facility golf course. Unit 49 is right here, kind of north of the Thomas Road alignment, adjacent to the Loop 303 right here. And this is aerial photo. This is where Unit 49 is proposed. Again, here's the Loop 303 right here. It's about 42 acres, 212 lots, predominantly the duplex lot, the villas that Pebble Creek has for their, that product, along with a few of the standard conventional lots within this subdivision. This page just kind of shows you the layout of the subdivision. The conventional lots are here, and here are generally the duplex lots through here. And along here, we do have, as Pebble Creek has, along that boundary with the Loop 303, they have that existing sound wall. And within here, we have about 10 acres of open space. Staff has reviewed the preliminary plat. We do find it consistent with the Pebble Creek PAD with the city's subdivision regulations. As such, staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission, we do recommend approval of this preliminary plat. With that, Mayor, that concludes my presentation. Staff and applicant available for questions.
Thank you very much, Steve. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? Oh, please come forth and say your name and address, and let me remind you that you have three minutes limit to speak, and the light will give you a yellow and a red. So, welcome.
One second.
All righty.
John McMillan, 17705 West Windsong, Goodyear. That's out in Australia. I have a question on the alignment of this plat here. Is there provision for access from Thomas Road to 303 West? Is there anything in this plan that covers that? Or is the city planning to cover that?
Okay, since this is a question at the time, so I'm going to let the legal take care of this. So, sorry, just to, yes.
If staff can, that is a fair question.
Can I call the staff up and answer?
You can call the staff forward if you'd like, Mayor.
Steve, you come forth?
It's an awkward alignment as it is where Thomas hits 303 anyway.
No, you're perfectly all right in asking the question. We appreciate your coming forth.
I'm just an old engineer.
Mayor and council members, what I have here is the back to the master plan for Pebble Creek, and we do not have any access along this area here to, we're not going west through this parcel or any others here. They have the existing sound wall, that barrier that's existing, so there'll be no cut-throughs.
Yes. Councilman Stip?
Steve, I think to help maybe further clarify this, there is no intention for us to connect this Thomas Road with the Thomas Road that is west of the 303.
That's correct. No connections.
Yeah. I think that may have been what you were looking for, sir, is that they're not, they were never intended to touch. Unfortunately, Thomas Road, I think throughout the valley, Avondale has a broken, has a broken segment of it. We've got a broken segment here at the 303, and I think it breaks before it gets into Buckeye again. I agree.
Is that clear?
Yep, very clear.
So, I'm going to just say if we can get back to make sure that he understands what was just presented and why. Thank you. So, somebody will be getting back to you. You're welcome. All right.
Just a minute. I don't know where I'm at. We still don't have a motion. You just need a motion and a second, Mayor.
Good, thank you. It's not a public hearing. I don't think it is, so I can say it's not a public hearing.
Mayor, you just need to do the motion in the second.
Motion, yeah. Could I have a motion a second to approve the Pebble Creek Phase 2, Unit 49 preliminary plat, please?
So moved. Second.
All right, a motion from Council Stip and a second from Councilwoman Pazillo. Open for council discussion. No discussion. Let's vote on it. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Next is 7.5 to consider approving Cantomea Phase 3, Parcel 31 preliminary plat. And Steve, you're back on. Planner 3 will present. Steve Caretti.
Thank you, Mayor. We move down to Cantomea. This is the master plan for Cantomea. Zoning was approved in 2005, and this master plan has seen some changes over the years, but it generally shows how Cantomea is developing. Here is Australia Parkway. The main entrance is right here, and how they've been developing is here from the east, kind of wrapping around Cantomea Parkway, and then jogging up here, and this is where we are tonight, Parcel And we had a pre-plat that was approved for much of Cantomea. This area right here also included Parcel 31. That was in 2014. That was 326 acres, over 1,000 lots. And again, that included this parcel tonight, Parcel 31. They've been doing some final engineering on the site, and with that, they've looked at it a little more closely, and due to the grades and topography, they needed to reconfigure Parcel 31. And again, here's where Parcel 31 is located. Zooming in, and again, because of the grades, they've had to, here we go. This is what was approved in 2014. You can see lots all the way to Cantomea Parkway, a couple cul-de-sacs here. And what they've done now is removed the cul-de-sac, remove seven lots, so we're down to 32 lots now, and had to add some open space here along the street. And this is just a side-by-side. Same lot sizes, 60s by 125, still private streets. Again, the only change is reducing the lots, having to put in a little more open space for this Parcel 31. So, because of that, they had to go back, redo it, this preliminary plat, and then final plat. We do have reviewed this new configuration. We do find it consistent with the Cantomea PAD with our subdivision regulations. As such, staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission, we are recommending approval of this preliminary plat. Mayor, I'm available for any questions, as is the applicant.
Thank you very much. Are there any speaker cards?
Yes, Mayor.
All right.
John McMillan?
Our engineer is back again, huh? We welcome you. And you know, say your name and address, and you're limited to three minutes.
John McMillan, 17705 West Windsong, Goodyear. That's out in Australia. I'm a native of Arizona, but a citizen of the world, so, and I'm an old engineer, 50 years, Army Corps of Engineers. So, these engineering questions pop up, and it's not a question specifically for the developer. It's really for the city. And the question is, given the increase, the grade increase in construction activity in that area, all through the Australia area, who in the city is responsible for maintaining and evaluating the condition of Australia Parkway, because it's starting to deteriorate the amount of construction traffic? So, that's a concern. That's a question, a question I had. Like I said, it's an old engineer. I worked a lot of roads.
We appreciate you coming forth, and I think our engineers would like to make a response. If I can give permission from the lawyer on that?
Aye.
Stay right there. Thank you, John.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And ultimately, we will be hearing, and I would urge you to watch, Council, on the 27th of August, where we're going to be presenting our pavement management program for this coming year. And Australia Parkway in this area will definitely be one of the projects we will be doing this coming fiscal year for doing a two-level pavement management along the roadway. So, thank you for your comment.
We appreciate that. Thank you for coming up. And I, it sounds like that you're satisfied with the answer, or you've been given the information.
As long as somebody's watching it, yes.
All right.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, and thank you for coming up. All right, could I have a motion a second to approve the Cantomea Phase 3, Parcel 31 preliminary plat?
So moved. Second.
I heard from Councilman Hampton and a second from Councilwoman Pazillo. Open for council discussion. No discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Let's go on to 7.6. The last item in business is to consider adopting resolution number 2018-1889, delegating authority to the city clerk to make recommendations regarding liquor license. Mario, it's nice to see you. We don't, we haven't seen you. That's good.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and welcome back. The item before you tonight is for consideration related to liquor licenses and the delegation of authority to the city clerk's office when making a recommendation to the Arizona Department of Liquor and Control for events that are temporary in nature. So, these are liquor license applications for special events, festivals, craft distillery festivals, and temporary extension of premises. The item before you is a result of House Bill 2334 that earlier this year amended several sections of the state statute governing liquor laws. The legislation in part allows city councils to delegate the authority to make recommendations to the state on your behalf. So, again, the applications are temporary in nature and will go through the same process the city has in place for special events. That process includes staff comments from building safety, risk management, police, fire inspection, fire plan review, traffic operations, streets code compliance, planning and zoning. The application would be approved based on the committee's review and comment, and should the council approve the item, the clerk's office is committed to keeping the council informed on the outcome of any applications reviewed. The action will result in faster processing times for the applicant and would also ensure a thorough review of each application through the special event process. This concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak on this subject? And will city clerk please read resolution number 2018-1889 by title only, please?
Adopt resolution number 2018-1889, delegating authority to the city clerk to make recommendations regarding special event liquor licenses, temporary extension of premises, fare licenses in craft distillery, fare licenses and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Can I have a motion a second to approve this resolution?
So moved. Second.
Councilwoman Pazillo, motion, and a second by Councilman Stip. Open for council discussion. Councilwoman Pazillo?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with the recommendation, but just a thought, since you're going to keep us informed on any of those approvals, and just tell me if this is maybe an appropriate place in the maybe city manager's weekly that you send us the updates. And just my thought, that might be a good place to put that type of information for us. That way, you know, because these things could be done regularly. So, a week's probably not that long of a period of time. Just let us know with the name of the event that you made the recommendation to, and I'm fine with that.
All right. Yes. Councilman Stip?
I just appreciate the idea that we're going to try to speed up our process and make it easier for the customer. So, I appreciate everyone's efforts to get that done. So, thanks for bringing it up.
Councilman Hampton?
Yeah, I'm just echoing Councilman Stip's point as well. Just, it's good to speed up the process and make it consistent for all these different type of uses that the person that's coming in, they can just follow the process and get through it and be able to hold their festival or whatever it is. So, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much for the information. We appreciate it. All right, I think that ends our evening. So, Council, it's time.
Mayor, you need to do the vote.
Pardon me, what? Did I miss one?
A vote.
We have a vote. Why can't I get that tonight? We have to vote. I must be in a rush to get this over with. All right, we have a roll. Does this take a roll call vote?
Yes.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Councilmember Pazillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, Council, any comments or recommendations or current events? Anything you want to talk about tonight?
I have an inquiry, but I'm not sure.
All right, I think that you.
That later.
No, I think what we're going to do, we've changed this, so he can do his inquiry now? All right, go ahead.
Okay, so earlier this evening, we received an email from an Australia resident regarding the trash pickup issues that are ongoing up there. I would prefer to not have to wait until Friday to find out if we're actually able to expedite. Just read the email. But it's regarding the pickup of the debris from the storms from a couple weeks ago, very slow. We got this email, I had heard from some folks 10 days ago or so, but I'm like, hey, the storm just hit. There was a lot of it. Not a big deal, but here we are 10 days later. I assumed it was all done. So, if we can kind of be quick about our response and figure out how.
More proactive.
Yeah, well, to this particular email, this is one of those things that'll take two days for staff to research it and get back, and I think we owe this individual probably something a little quicker, and I'd like to hear about it before Friday in the manager's thing that here's our plan, and this is what we're going to do. I'm not expecting it to be cleaned up by Friday, but at least I have the plan identified that we can communicate it. I don't think that's unreasonable.
Anything else? Sherry?
I agree with Bill partially on that, and I kind of want to say, because I'm up there, my take, I would like to get a specific date so we could tell these people. I know we waited for the second pickup because there were some people still clearing stumps and trees, and because we got hit with two storms, one and then the one that took the power out, I know there was additional. But if we could get a specific date so people know, because people still have insurance adjusters coming, and so we could actually kind of narrow that down and put out that on this day, your trash is going to be picked up. But I do want to thank. But I, I do want to think, on the nights of the storms, we had streets out there, we had fire out there, we had police out there, police was moving trees with their SWAT vehicles, for those that didn't know, off the roads. It was a tornado that went up there, I don't know officially or whatever, but garage doors were burnt in, people lost roofs, people lost power, and everyone was up there, we had Goodyear trucks up there, so I just think they did a dynamite job on the day. I think we need a date now to say this is the next trash pickup, but they did a great job.
So what is the process on that part? What, what did we do? Can somebody address?
If, if council is so willing, we may have our public works director provide an update on this matter.
That would be nice, good, thank you.
Yeah, Mayor and council certainly responded right away to the emergency up in Australia, and there's been, certainly we had to balance the routes, the scheduled routes, as well as being able to respond to the storm events. Our staff was working six days a week, over twelve hours in some of those days, but some of the lack of coordination that took place was due to the fact that we came through in some of those areas right away, and our, the neighborhood had not had a chance to put some of the stuff out. So I, I have to go back and figure out exactly where we are in some of those, and how, when exactly we're going, we're going to go back. So our policy was focused on making sure that if we were two weeks out, we would respond to that, and we certainly, we think we've achieved most of our ability of doing that, but again, we, we came through in some streets right away, and then just our neighbors didn't have an opportunity of putting some of the debris out, so we have to go back.
Questions, go ahead.
So we will work to obtain those specific dates, communicate that to council, and also begin pushing that back up to the community.
We appreciate, and thank you, thanks, all the people who worked on, yes, Council Stiff.
Javier, before you sit down, this issue came up, I think, last year during monsoon?
Yeah.
Maybe it was the year before, but, two years ago. Monsoon up in, up in Australia, the year, last year, I think it was Palm Valley that got smashed, the, and it's, it's the juggling act of bulk trash versus storm cleanup, and at the time, I think we had asked the former city manager to please, let's come up with a program, I don't know if that ever got communicated back down, but I, I think going forward, we need to really have a, a plan of what we're going to do, and if that means we've got to bring in contract folks to haul some of that junk away, or at least get it out of the streets and to a, to a common area, that then we can, we can pepper that. I think we have to respond to the immediate emergency, but I think we also need to be looking at the long-term strategy as well.
And Mayor, Mayor and council, if I may say something, yeah, last year, we considered several options to be able to respond to these events. One of the options was to work with contractors. Ultimately, what we decided to do is to go ahead and add an additional crew. We are in the process of hiring that crew and bringing the equipment, and with such an unusual event, it just.
It's overwhelming, there's no doubt about it.
Yeah.
But I think we, we owe the public a really good, a solid answer, how we're going to respond to this, and then what are we going to do long-term, that's all.
Councilman Hampton?
Didn't we in the beginning also ask Avondale for help, and they helped us out with some of that cleanup as well?
That is correct. We actually had the opportunity of working with Avondale, and they helped us for a few days, so that, that really helped.
It's an op and poss, potential and other options, yeah. No, I think it was good creative that we really do that, so thank you.
Thanks.
Any more discussion on this?
Oh, I just, I just want to make, make sure that people understand that we got hit twice up there, so what happened, we, the first one, and then they came and cleaned out, and they did post, you know, we're, we're getting our way around, and then we got hit again, and some of the same areas got hit, so those areas might have been missed, so maybe if people could also let the city know if their area has been missed, that might help out, to see if it's something that someone's already think they got, but got hit by the second storm, hopefully the last storm.
But we need to congratulate the staff that was so proactive, too, and that, the police and the fire and everything that went on, they were there, I mean, people said they were there when the storm was striking the area, so they were really proactive on it, but I agree with you, we need to figure out how to handle the, the debris when it's all said and done, so, yes, go ahead, Councilman Stiff.
So now that we've said all of that, it is appropriate to talk about the response that we did, that we had, which was awesome. The storm that came that Monday night, a couple of weeks ago, that, I don't know, I think it was the same night that the Australia issue happened, but I was, I got trapped out, I was outside in it, I saw police officers pulling, pulling over to the side of the road, physically pulling trees out of the way, I know the fire department was running like crazy, the streets folks came out, I think parks people were out with chainsaws, and, I mean, it was, it was a, it was a pretty monumental task, and everybody really rose very, very well to that. So please don't take my comments about the long-term strategy as a, as a criticism in any way, because I think everyone did a great job. It's just now we're a couple weeks post, and, and now the, now the criticism will begin from the public if we're, if we haven't responded quick enough, so I've got a little, obviously, due diligence up here, but I am, it was very, it was very easy for us to talk about what a great response we had as a community. We're on council break, so we didn't get a chance to see anybody, but when you talk to people and they, you know, the trees down, but the streets were cleared right away, and it was, you know, it was a moment of pride, you know, that we should all share.
Thank you. Any other?
I'd also like to commend everybody on the immediate communication that went out. I did hear from residents how much they appreciated the notifications that came out from the city about the, the event, during the event, and, and post-event, so thank you for that.
So we're going to develop a process that we publicize, so that it's like anything else, that they're fully aware, whatever time that it might strike, and, and so I think that will eliminate, and I'm sure many people were very perplexed on what to do when you walk out and you see all that damage, and the first thing you want is, okay, someone help us clear this off, I mean, and without the electricity and all the things they had to go through, so it was very difficult, so I think we're on the right road to correct that, and we'll put it out, and like anything else, make sure that it's given to the public in some type of form that they can keep to refer to, so, okay? All right, city manager, you have the floor.
Thank you, welcome back, but I have no communication items this evening.
Thank you. That's it, that's all you have tonight. Well, we appreciate the welcome, and I never even said that to the council, it's nice to see all of you again, and you all look so rested. Anyway, so let's say the next meeting will be a special meeting at five PM, and a regular meeting at six PM on August twenty-seventh, and then September tenth, a work session, and a meeting on September, and a special meeting, so that's going to be a busy night. So with that, no further business, this meeting is adjourned.